Medical order, and so we're gonna begin with Ms. Garner. And then Ms. Britt will let who knows who else needs to come next. If you do have any family members that you wish to hold the Bible during your swearing in, just have them come up with you and we'll let you know what all to do. Thank you.
Ms. Garner?
Yes, I'll go first.
You get to go first.
Fantastic.
Okay. What we're gonna do is you're gonna place your left hand on the Bible.
Okay.
And you're gonna raise your right hand.
Okay.
And you're gonna raise your right hand. And I'm gonna share these words and you can read. Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
You may proceed.
"I, Megan Garner, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge my duties as a member of the Lee County Board of Education. So help me God."
Congratulations. Ms. Hooker? Ms. Hooker's most important family members would you like to join us?
Do you want time to do mighty things?
You're big. How are you? Good, good, good. Okay, you want to hold the Bible? And Ms. Hooker, we're gonna ask you to place your left hand on the Bible at the right. And I'm gonna read.
Hooker. In the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge my duties as a member of the Lee County Board of Education. So help me God.
Thank you. Thank you. And family members would like to join in? Would you like to hold the Bible? Are they coming? Come on, Brandon. You place your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right.
So glad you went by alphabetically and not by height. and laws of the United...
Congratulations.
Everyone, could please join us in the back for some refreshment. And our meeting will begin at five.
We're glad to see you. How are you?
How you doing there?
I'm good.
We all do it the same too. Don't know.
That's right. That's right. One to one now.
I will. Eventually. It's gonna be all flustered.
Congratulations. Our mayor is on. It's gonna be Samantha. Actually, at Christmas, we're all gonna be lit out. Crazy.
I almost wore red shirt. Almost. I mean, I come from...
Cool mood.
Yeah. Has been a work...
Yeah, I was getting ready to ask you, did you have all your stuff set at Red Rock?
I think so. So this is a copy of that letter that I emailed to you if we need it.
Okay.
I don't think there's gonna be a whole lot to...
I don't think so either.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Kicking of the can's gotta come to an end. It's early yet.
Hey, how you doing?
You okay?
No, I mean, I'm good.
I know you put a lot of work into it. Yeah.
How are you saying? How are you doing, my friend?
Good.
Yeah.
I think so.
I get out of our cell phone.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, guys.
Hi, guys.
Well, I'll say it's better to be seen than viewed. That's right. Ain't that way with you?
Hey, how you doing?
Hey, how you doing?
I'm doing well. Hope you are. Been a while.
I was here.
Oh, yeah? Where you at?
Over there.
Sure, I'll say it.
You're right there in the hat next to Chris Dusselbaum.
Oh, yeah, I see you. I see you, man. How y'all been?
Good.
Good, good.
I do think I just took about 80 because I was pressing my...
All right, now just do serious one. Do serious. This is serious business.
This looks better than before you do. Now do a smiley one like that because I cut out the ceiling. That looks good.
I will send them around.
They sitting on Brown at the same time. Must've gone to the same school of photography.
She would have. That's why they're teaching.
We did.
Yeah. Were you having New Year's pictures and hobnob? Hopefully you'll still talk to...
Of course. And you oughta get some food too.
That's right. You have to behave now.
Have to behave.
Where's the no vote? Right there.
So glad you went by alphabetically and not by height.
I share it in word, Matthew, solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United...
Thank you.
I'm gonna do that for you, okay?
Hi.
How you doing?
Hey, how you doing?
I'm doing well. Hope you are. Been a while.
I was here.
Oh, yeah? Where you at?
Over there.
Sure, I'll say it.
You're right there in the hat next to Chris Dusselbaum.
Oh, yeah, I see you. I see you, man. How y'all been?
Good.
Good, good.
I do think I just took about 80 because I was pressing my...
All right, now just do serious one. Do serious. This is serious business.
This looks better than before you do. Now do a smiley one like that because I cut out the ceiling. That looks good.
I will send them around.
They sitting on Brown at the same time. Must've gone to the same school of photography.
She would have. That's why they're teaching.
We did.
Yeah. Were you having New Year's pictures and hobnob? Hopefully you'll still talk to...
Of course. And you oughta get some food too.
I can't worry all this much. That's right. You have to behave now.
Have to behave.
Where's the no vote? Right there.
So glad you went by alphabetically and not by height.
I share it in word, Matthew, solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United...
Thank you.
I'm gonna do that for you, okay?
Hi.
How you doing?
Hey, how you doing?
I'm doing well. Hope you are. Been a while.
I was here.
Oh, yeah? Where you at?
Over there.
Sure, I'll say it.
You're right there in the hat next to Chris Dusselbaum.
Oh, yeah, I see you. I see you, man. How y'all been?
Good.
Good, good.
I do think I just took about 80 because I was pressing my...
All right, now just do serious one. Do serious. This is serious business.
This looks better than before you do. Now do a smiley one like that because I cut out the ceiling. That looks good.
I will send them around.
They sitting on Brown at the same time. Must've gone to the same school of photography.
She would have.
That's why they're teaching.
We did.
We did. Were you having New Year's pictures and hobnob?
And all that.
Hopefully you'll still talk to...
Of course. And you oughta get some food too.
I can't worry all this much. That's right. You have to behave now.
Have to behave.
Where's the no vote? Right there.
Where's the no vote?
Right there.
Can you have...
She's been doing it.
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 We did.
Yeah.
Were you having New Year's pictures and hobnob?
And all that.
Hopefully you'll still talk to...
Of course.
And you oughta get some food too.
I can't worry all this much.
That's right. You have to behave now.
Have to behave.
Let's watch that.
Where's the no vote? Right there.
Can you have...
She's been doing it.
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 Sir.
Lawyer question.
Lawyer question. I'm good at this.
I come to the right place.
Yeah.
Um... No, he needs it. We are not obligated to allow... I'm just... I'd assume triple or quadruple if we could. Just to make sure to keep... With more shame.
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 What's this? What's this? I'm sorry. I didn't notice. I didn't notice you. How are you? I'm sorry.
What is this?
How come you're not...
It's been a while.
So Wendy's...
I guess I...
I guess I...
Right now...
Is this off?
The...
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 On the second page, I guess before we signed one to send off, I missed another grand bill in there.
We'll get it corrected. We'll get it corrected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'd be embarrassing.
We'll get it corrected. Let's see. It is in here. Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right. We can do that. Now that, do you... Chris? Chris?
Do you have all this at first? Yes.
We're gonna need to spend a couple days, a week after this meeting or something. After all this talking.
Oh, yeah. If we could have all board members take their seat, please?
All right.
At this time, I would like to call the Lee County Board of Education meeting to order. Each December, the Board of Education has the opportunity to reorganize. As a reminder, nominations for chair or vice chair do not require a second. To that effect, at this time, I will take nominations for chair.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Sherri Womack as chair.
Mr. Gaster has nominated Ms. Womack. Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Ms. Womack, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Ms. Chair. I will turn the gavel to you to elect a vice chair.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson-Bach, and thank you, Eric, for the wonderful job you did last year. We appreciate you, and I know the community does as well. We are now opening the floor for nominations for vice chair. Do I hear any nominations?
I would like to nominate Alan Rummel for vice chair.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Alan. We're now getting ready to go into closed session. Pastor, would you read that, please?
I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A, 1A3, A6, to discuss confidential student information under North Carolina General Statute 115C-402, to discuss confidential personnel information under North Carolina General Statute 115C-319 and 115C-321, and to consult with the board's attorney and maintain the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now going to closed session. Action.
A moment of silence. If you please bow your heads. If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have our Lee County Vision Statement.
Vision Statement. Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Next, we have our Ethics Statement. Ms. Ortiz.
Code of Ethics for School Board Members, Policy 2120. The Board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the Board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should: Avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board; Avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board; Avoid the misuse of public funds; Avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts; And avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Board's Association.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. I had a Board Member approach and request for something to be added to our agenda. So, under New Business, the item number six will be the letter to the North Carolina General Assembly, and number seven will be Personnel. If I could get a motion to approve that agenda, please.
Motion to approve. Agenda is amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the approval of our minutes and the student transfer appeal hearings.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the student appeal hearings and what else you say?
The minutes.
In the minutes.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of 11-12-2024 and the student transfer hearing for 12-4-2024. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have our public comments. We have four people signed up. We have a timer when you go to speak, and we welcome all comments. First is Jim Womack, then Kurt Smith, Roger Poyer, I hope I'm saying that correctly, and then April Stone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jim Womack, I live at 1615 Boone Trail Road here in Sanford, North Carolina. Just wanted to say a few words tonight. First off, commendations to the newly elected Board members. You earned this right to serve the public in this very important position on the school board. We are looking forward to the great things that you're going to accomplish. You know, with great success, though, comes great responsibility. And we want the Board to know that the taxpayers and the parents and the families of this community are really looking forward to seeing continued sustained progress over what the remnants of this board have already accomplished over the past few years. Hiring, you know, a superb new superintendent was the first great thing that you did. Having an audit of the finances and the performance of the schools was really important. It gave you a lot of great things to look forward to accomplish. But the most important single thing, I think, that, speaking on behalf of a lot of the citizens of this county, is the fact that you're focused now on metrics. You're focused on improving scores and getting the school system back to where we are, where we were in the early 2000s. And I would just tell you that I think that you guys have everything ahead of you. Everything, there's no limit to what Lee County School System can do. This county is blessed with great private Christian schools, with wonderful homeschooling cohorts around the county, with charter schools, and with improving public schools. And I got to tell you, you know, having that complement across the county is unusual among the counties in the state. I think you have everything going for you. You've got a great community college system here that you can matriculate students through there and to get important schools or skills training, and then again, stair-step into four-year collegiate work. We have everything going for us in Lee County. We're on a massive growth spurt here over the last six or seven years. There's, again, everything ahead of you. And the one thing that you can do to make this county the place to live, work, and play, the one thing you can do is to continue to improve scores and improve the potential of our children to go into the workforce or to go on to college so that they can serve their communities to their full potential. So, we just look forward to working with you, to seeing how well this Board can accomplish its goal. The one other challenge I think you've got to do, you've got to forge a strong working relationship with the county commissioners. You don't want to get crosswise with your bankers. And, you know, you'll learn that early on. If you can find that strong working relationship with the county commissioners, the potential of this county is limitless. Look forward to seeing you achieve those goals. Thank you so much.
Ms. Smith.
Good evening. Kirk Smith, 3108 Dave Vance Ferry Road. On behalf of the Lee County Board of Commissioners, I want to congratulate the newest members of the Board, Chairwoman and Vice Chair. Congratulations. First, I would like to introduce Samantha Martin. Commissioner Samantha Martin is going to be the liaison. She'll be sitting in for the former Commissioner Sharp, or Carver, I'm sorry. My point here is I wish to bring to your attention concerning your agenda, Classified Staff Compensation Proposal. You propose to compensate the shortfall of $2,800,000 in four 25% increments of $709,000. What would be a problem is your proposal to pay the combined classified staff a total of $709,000 starting January 1st of 2025 for the remainder of the '24-'25 fiscal year. Then, with the '25-'26 fiscal year, starting July 1st, your plan is to increase another $709,000 over the course of a year. You do know that your combined classified staff will receive less pay per period in the year '25-'26 than what they will receive from the first six months of '25. Concerning the resolution, I'm going to quote North Carolina General Statute 115C 426E, and I quote, "The local current expense fund shall include sufficient," excuse me, includes appropriation sufficient when added to appropriations from the state public school fund for the current operation expense of the public school system in conformity with the educational goals and policies of the state and local Board of Education, within the financial resources and consistent with the fiscal policies of the Board of County Commissioners." And I emphasize, "within the financial resources and consistent with the fiscal policies of the Board of County Commissioners. Per the North Carolina State Salary Schedule, the state provides a minimum and maximum pay for most classified staff positions. Local Boards of Education should have scales for these staff and should update them as required to the state budget actions. In addition, the Board prior to the fiscal year '25 request has not specifically referenced pay increases other than increased teacher supplements. Also in your resolution, the reference to Lee County should be Lee County Board of Education as the Lee County Board of Commissioners did not place a freeze on classified staff in 2008. On another note, I personally presented to this Board the Lee County Resolution in support of establishing a Vehicle Maintenance Facility Committee with the Lee County Board of Education to recognize the economies of scale for a joint maintenance facility that can be utilized by both parties-
Mr. Smith, time is expired.
-and save the taxpayers whom we all serve.
But thank you.
In closing, I wish you Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Roger. Roger, please tell me how to say your name correctly.
Poyer.
Poyer, okay. I got it. Thank you.
Roger, this is my first time doing this type of thing, so I guess I say my name and address. Roger Poyer, 102 Teegarden Court. So, I have a son who attends Deep River Elementary. Six months ago, my family and I moved here from Hawaii. We took ample time to speak to Lee County and all the surrounding districts to find a perfect fit for my kindergarten son, and we have two other children as well. Those around us raved about the district, so we made the commitment to find a home in Lee County and send our kids where we truly felt it would be best. My kindergarten son is at Deep River Elementary. He's in the EC program there. He's moderate to severe autism. My wife and I met with his team, admin of Deep River and central office, on October 31st. My wife and I met with his team, admin of Deep River and Central Office on October 31st to discuss horrific behaviors, educational time lost, and lack of support. We walked out with new plans to include that our son would start the process of an FBA to get a one-on-one, something his EC team has expressed he needs desperately, something my wife and I believe he deserves. At the meeting, we agreed to meet in December to discuss, as it would be in six weeks of data, and I am set to deploy in January, and I wanted to have this set and sewn for my son. Two weeks ago, my wife emailed his team asking for the date so we could set it up. It took two weeks to get a reply. Yesterday, we received an email stating that his FBA is not ready, and there wouldn't be a meeting in December. We were told by your admin at Deep River it would be complete. We were told by your EC director it would be complete. My son has been failed. Now we wait more weeks as the process is just now starting. Paperwork was just sent home yesterday for the first time. Christmas break is coming, more time waited and lost, more educational time taken for my son. I hope as the Board you see how badly things need to change, how badly your EC teams at the school need support of their admins and your head of EC. How much support is needed, and how much better can be done.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. April Stone.
Hi. April Stone, 727 Forestwood Park Road, Sanford, North Carolina. Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Dawsonbach. As expected, my coworkers and I are here together at this board meeting to hear from you all regarding our requests we made back in November. Dr. Dawsonbach and Mr. Rumel, thank you for meeting with myself and my colleagues to discuss the current and potential budget. We appreciate the transparency and the discussion that was held in good faith. We know that there will be a budget proposal that will include a salary schedule and pay increase for all classified staff today in Lee County. We know that it is not the amount it could have been due to funding from county commissioners and not requesting, not funding the Board's complete request for their budget. We hope that even though the members, the numbers are smaller and the future regarding this pay is uncertain, that all of you, as our Board, will vote in favor for this proposed budget as an indication that you value your employees and that Lee County Schools is as dedicated to us as we are our students. I am going to kind of stop and go, so sorry, but, you know, the $709,000 divided into fours and things like that, I get that you guys don't have the money. But we deserve it. We've deserved it for 15 years. You know, I'm sure that when you took positions at job facilities and places and they told you that you were going to get this amount, and then they say, "Well, you're supposed to get this, but you're only going to get this," how well would you have wanted to do your job? Would you have wanted to take your position for a fourth of what you're deserved? I feel like, you know, it's a good step, it's a step in good faith, but I also feel like it's kind of a slap in the face to a lot of our classified employees. We go in every day, we're dedicated, we make those buses roll, we feed your, you know, the kids. We're dedicated, we love our students. I mean, we've been in these meetings and we've told you all we can make more at McDonald's than we do working for Lee County Schools, which is very sad. I mean, let's see. During our meeting with Mr. Dawsonbach, you said that it was your intention to have each staff, your staff sit down one-on-one with each classified employee and explain the pay scale and pay increase, which we are looking forward to. We're thankful for your willingness to explain this. We also requested back in November a transparent and clarified paycheck. We also look forward to seeing that whenever our new pay scale and pay increase is implemented. I also have over 131 signatures here from a petition that support our request for more money, clarified pay scale, and our paycheck subs, to be clarified. In closing, I do appreciate being able to speak to each and every one of you on behalf of my classified fellow coworkers. I hope that we can move forward. I hope that things can continue to go smoothly, but I also want you to know that we're very disappointed and disheartened.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Next, we have the Chairman's Report. Do you have anything left to lay from before? I wanted to share some things that I learned during the conference in Greensboro just recently, and one of the things, it's, we're always talking about public schools versus private schools and how, well, you're putting all this money into public schools and they don't seem to be succeeding. So, I'm very passionate about public schools, so I want to share something with you, and I'm going to have to stand up because I'm short, okay? This is a list. This is the mandates, a list of mandates in the last 120 years that our public schools must do. You look at all these mandates, and you go all the way down the list, so many things has been added. And I brought copies, if anybody wants them, for the end of the register, and I intend, and I've handed some to the county commissioners, and I intend to present it to them as well. But these are the additional mandates that's put onto our teachers and our staff. We are asking them to do the impossible with very minimal, and they continue to do it every day. I know I see them, they're smiling, they're happy, they do the right things for our students, but they cannot do it alone. This Board's sole mission is to be able to try to figure out a way to get this community involved where we can assist in meeting the goals and objectives that we need to do. These teachers cannot be the parents, they cannot be the pastors, they cannot be the counselors, they cannot be the nurses, the healthcare nurses, your transportation, every single thing that a child needs, it's going to take our community to do it. And that's why I want everyone to see this. This is a huge difference. This is not what happens in typical private schools. They do not have to have the same mandates. The other thing that we had, other than this class, was an excellent class that I had. I heard the news say that we, I wrote in the news that the school board seems to be at an impasse with the county commissioners. We are not at an impasse. We are just beginning. And I presented a plan to the county commissioners, and I'm just going to stay standing because the mic's already up here. It's called a five-on-five committee, and there's extra copies here, and it will be presented at our very next board meeting. What you need to do is have, when you have, like so many members, that if you take three members from each Board, the county and school finance directors, the county manager, and the school superintendent, you have an open meeting and you sit down and you talk, and you have that communication. We have to work together, because no matter what anybody says to you, I don't care what party you're in, I don't care who you voted for, the bottom line, Lee County Board of Education, and I believe our county commissioners well, are all about the citizens of Lee County. And I intend for us to work together, and that's all I have. Your turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Each year, the district holds a design for our Christmas card, which will eventually be sent out to schools within our district and all school districts across the state. This year, we had a record number of entries, and the talent that we have in our schools is simply amazing. Here tonight to recognize our top three in each of our categories and to announce the winners is Mr. James Alversen.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dawsonbach and Board of Education. We are very, very excited to recognize some fantastic student artists here tonight, and I will go ahead and ask, if you're here tonight as one of our student artists, come on up and stand next to me, please, so we can give you the proper recognition.
So, we had 34 submissions from our 17 different schools for the card contest. We ran two different divisions. We ran an elementary division and a secondary division, so all of your middle schools from sixth grade and up and then K to five were all in those two different divisions. So, we selected three finalists, and we have already announced those on social media, and you can see in our elementary division, if you look at the screen here, two of our finalists are right here. Ms. Olivia Franklin from JR Ingram, fifth grader, was an outstanding snowscape and, was it a gingerbread house? Yeah, it's outstanding. It looks great. And then we also have Ms. Liliana Cruz from WB Wicker. They are two finalists, and we want to present Olivia with her certificate of recognition. And is Liliana here tonight? I don't think so. But we also have our overall winner that we're announcing tonight in the elementary division, and that's Ms. Renee Hartley from J. Glenn Edwards. She's our overall winner at the elementary division, and you can see her wonderful snowman here, looks great, and you did a wonderful job, I think it was ink pen and a little bit of, some crayon and ink pen. She had some multiple medias, but she did a great job, and so congratulations to Renee. And next, we'll move on to our secondary division. We have two finalists here as well. Melissa Blue from Lee Early College was one of ours, and I don't know if you're here. So, Melissa, congratulations, and thank you very much for, your submission is a wonderful portrait there. What medium did you use?
Different art, so I use an iPad and an Apple.
So, iPad and Apple pencils. She does a whole lot more with technology than I could ever think about doing, and it is very, very impressive. So, thank you, Melissa. We also had a wonderful, it's paint, paint and watercolor from Merle Jimenez Paso, Bragg Street Academy. She's an eighth grader there, so she was our only middle school representative that finished in the finalists, and she did a wonderful job on that holiday card as well. But our winner is from Southern Lee High School, Ms. Mia Perez, and you see this here done with colored pencil, exclusively with colored pencil. So, she did an outstanding job there, and we had a panel of several judges from Central Office that all made their votes, and that one came out on top, although it was very, very close in the secondary school division. So, congratulations to Ms. Mia Perez.
Sure, I think.
Good?
All right.
Two, three.
Great job. Thank you, ladies.
Congratulations to all of you. Very impressive. Moving on in my report and reflecting upon the budget last year, we were made aware that budget priorities were set by the commissioners during their winter retreat, which was held several months before we had an opportunity to present our budget. So, to ensure that we're a part of the budget priorities this year, we've been given the opportunity to provide information during their winter retreat, and just want to make the Board and everyone aware that we will not present at this retreat, but we will provide information so that they can help set their budget priorities for '25-'26, and that will take place January 31st, 2025, at the Sand Lee Nature Center. I do not have a specific time in which our information may be discussed, but if I get that information, I can pass that along. Finally, I want to wish our high school students and staff the very best as they gear up for state exams next week. It's hard to believe that we have made it halfway through the school year, but here we are. I know that everyone has worked hard all year and will do their very best. With that, I want to remind everyone that our schools will enter into Christmas break next week. Tremway Elementary will release students early next Wednesday, and Lee Early College and our traditional schools will release students early next Friday. I do wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I hope that you can take some time to relax, reflect, and enjoy some time with family and friends. Thank you very much.
Before we move forward, Dr. Dawsonbach's a kind of a humble man, so I think the community should know when you bring something to his attention during the training, I immediately sent him the slides in reference to the DARE Five-to-Five Plan, is what they call it. The next phone call I get is, "Hey, I just left a meeting, and I was at this conference, and I took the time to speak with the superintendent from DARE." So, that's the type of superintendent that we have for Lee County Schools. I'm extremely proud of that. So, next we have is our announcements in our reports. We have Ms. Kelly from Finance. Show us the money.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, you have before you the financials for the month of September. I'm open to any questions in regards to that report.
I didn't think to ask, Kelly, since we didn't have a finance report this month. Did the state finalize the ADM adjustment stuff?
I have that note. I was going to give it at the end, but I can give it now. They did, we had our webinar this morning, our monthly, or we actually have them every two weeks with a CFO from DPI, and she stated that we would have that on Thursday. So, I did go ahead and put in the chat that we would like the breakout so that we know exactly how they calculated that, because I figured it, you know, that way we'll have it and come back into it. Okay. Next, you have before you the Board Expense Report, and this does reflect everything up until last Thursday.
I appreciate you making the changes from last, since our last board meeting. Are there any questions from any Board members?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our Board Attorney still has no report.
Unless there are any questions from the Board members, no direct report.
Not yet. Next, we have our committee reports. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee did not meet this time. Our next meeting is on February 5th at 3:30 at the Assembly Room. We did have a discipline meeting on November 13th, and that next meeting is going to be on March 12th at 3:30 in the Assembly Room. And next, we have the Facilities and Technology. Mr. Rumel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Facilities and Technology Committee met last week. I do want to say I appreciate Jamie Ladotti. He chaired that meeting, and I will be doing the report, obviously, with him not being on the Board, but appreciate the work that he put in. So, the Lee County Schools Elementary District Criteria Discussion is listed on tonight's agenda under New Business. We'll discuss that in greater detail at that point. The committee talked about the Lee Senior Stadium Visitor Side Contract, so I'm going to give you a bit of detail there. Demolition will be starting in about two weeks and is expected to take approximately six weeks to complete, so the Board approved that funding last month. The next piece of the puzzle there is for a concrete pad, so the committee believes that the smartest thing to do there is to pour a pad large enough to accommodate 1,800 seats. The current capacity of the visitor's side is about 2,000. So, you'll hear in just a minute when we recommend the number of seats to put. This concrete pour is easier to do in one piece than to try to come back later, so economy of scale with that one. For the new bleachers, we had two options. So, for 900 seats, the cost would be about $386,000. For 1,800 seats, it would be double that, at about $728,000. So, the committee recommends the 900-seat option, and that is assuming that the Board of Education will have to absorb funding out of the current capital allotment. So, the concrete would be paid for this year when that work is completed. The bleacher purchase order would not, would not be paid until October, so it would be in the next fiscal year, because that will not have to be paid until delivery. So, the Board can include that on our next capital request. So, upcoming until we have bleachers, though, the school board will have to basically pay for bleacher rentals at a cost of about $16,000 per rental, so for games and graduation and things like that, there will be several instances where we need to rent bleachers that can be put on that concrete pad. But I guess going forward, we would like to request special funding from the county for that project in full in the amount of about $640,000. So, that would be the demo, the concrete, and the 900 seats worth of bleachers that need to go there. So, at any rate, I guess this is broken into two pieces. So, on tonight's consent agenda for approval, we have the concrete and the 900 seats figure. And then I guess I would request that we work with the Board Chair to set up a request to the county for this project, since, again, we're having to push items off of our capital request to pay for this special funding. So, the next thing the committee discussed was a vehicle purchase for transportation and maintenance. This is for the purchase of a truck and a cargo van to replace incapacitated vehicles. So, again, the school board had requested a purchase of five vehicles in our capital request for this year, and that was funded, but at this point, we are pushing three of those purchases- But at this point, we are pushing three of those purchases to help fund the stadium repairs. So on the consent agenda tonight, you'll see requests for two vehicles in the, in the amount of $81,192.40 from capital funds. The last piece was on the CIP. So we had a discussion about land purchase criteria and the administrative team is working on a checklist to identify potential parcels and will present that checklist to the committee next month. The next F and T committee will be held on January 28th at 4:30 PM in the Heinz Building. That's all I got.
Next you have finance as well.
We did not have a.
Okay, finance did not have a meeting. However, their next meeting will be January the 30th at 4:30 in the Assembly Room. And next we have Mr. Gaster with policy.
Madam Chair, before all of you board members, it's the policies for first reading. No action is necessary. Just to give you an overview of those, what we discussed during that was the tobacco products and students smoking in tobacco products. This is all policies 4320 and 5026 and 7250. And then the combined recommended updates for remote participation in board meetings. And then testing and assessment program in registered sex offenders. And then we had a couple required updates was concussion and head injury and administering medicines to students. And then some added regulations that went in there as well to some policies that are in our policy manual. And our next meeting will be December the 17th at 5:00 PM at the High Education Building in the basement. That's all I have.
And I would like to explain a little bit to the community and the new board members. When you see our new policies or you see policies up for the board for review, I think it's very significant that we do it color coded. It makes it easier for both yourself and board members to keep track of what's required and what's not required. If you see on our policies, when they are put it out, when they're put out there, if there's an addition, it has double lines underneath it. If it's a deletion, it has a line through it. Now, if it's red, that means that's a general statute. That's a law. That's what the law requires us to put into the policy. If it's yellow, that's the North Carolina School Board Association's recommendation. And then blue is Lee County School Changes. So, and then the, now, and the added one, it's green, it's our attorney's recommendation as well. But the reason you need to know that is because, just because it says, just because it appears that it's coming, for instance, like from the North Carolina School Board Association, that doesn't mean that Lee County Schools must adopt that policy just like it's written. They, that's why we have a policy committee. And the two biggest things that any school board member would do, other than hiring the superintendent, is physical responsibility and developing those policies. Do you have anything else you'd like to tell them about policies?
I think you covered it pretty good, Chair.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. And next we have our action item, which is the consent agenda. And the way that works is we take things that usually do not require much communication or discussion because it's already been discussed in some committee and you had the paperwork at least four days in advance. So that's what the consent agenda is. But at any time, any time before the board meeting, during the board meeting, if you, if you request to have something removed from the consent agenda so we can talk about it more, I will be more than glad to do that. I need you guys to understand that. So now at this time, I would like to entertain a motion for an approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, no discussion, okay. And we have no unfinished business. Now we move to our new business, which is the 202526 Budget Calendar. Ms. Jones, again, sorry.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have before you the 2526 Budget Calendar as proposed.
Any board members have any questions or concerns with the budget calendar? Entertain a motion, Mr. Allen.
Motion to approve the budget calendar.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Motion passes. Next is the Lee County Elementary School Redistricting Criteria. Mr. Rummel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so we, Facilities and Technology Committee reviewed this in committee and did unanimously approve or recommends approval of the redistricting criteria that you have before you. So the three primary criteria we asked administration to consider is transportation route of no more than 90 minutes, neighborhood integrity, so basically don't split up one neighborhood into two elementary districts, for example, so leave a whole neighborhood together. And then number three is easing capacity issues forward looking. So basically taking into account areas in the county that we know are growing more rapidly than others, trying to offset as much as possible so that this redistricting plan will last for more than one school year. For a secondary item that we did discuss a bit was considering socioeconomic status of students. So that's basically average median income. So two things that we discussed there a bit was we definitely don't want to be busing kids across the county in an attempt or perception to hide students who are struggling in a school that is not struggling. I think if we all listen to the news, sometimes other counties do things like that. So we don't want to get into that situation. And then we also want to make sure, make sure that we maintain family proximity to school as much as possible. So keeping families as close to their school as they can to give them utmost opportunity to be engaged in their child's school. So that's kind of a secondary, a secondary criteria after the first three are met. So I guess with that, I would make a motion to approve those criteria for redistricting.
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone have any questions? Okay. Time to vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, Mr. Gaster, back to you again.
So before board members, we have the returning policy of 3220 Technology and the Educational Program. And a new optional policy is Policy 4140 of Foreign Exchange Students. Policy 3420 is Student Promotion and Accountability. An updated policy of 4,700 student records and 3,450 class rankings. And with that being said, then I would like to move, I move that Lee County Board of Education approve these stated policies for the second reading.
Second.
Motion. Has any, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And next we have the resolution in support of the Classified Staff Compensation Plan. Mr. Marmal, would you mind reading that and starting our discussion, please?
Before that, we have the, the plan itself, number four. The Classified Staff Compensation.
Oh, the proposal, okay. The proposal.
Yep. So we do have a slide deck to go with this one because I'd really like to share some information to provide a bit of history, to explain how we arrived at our current situation and the plan that's being presented tonight, and honestly to dispel some rumors and provide some clarification on some of the statements that, that we've heard from various employees and members of the community. So before I get going, I did want to give some extra appreciation to Ms. Kelly Jones and Jordan Allred. They spent a ton of time going through lists of employees one by one to come up with the figures and, you know, give options to the board and help us understand what's affordable. So thank you to those folks. So without further ado, we can go to the next slide, please. So wanted to start with a bit of background information. So classified step increases were frozen back in 2008 during the recession and were never lifted to this day. So we are not aware of any prior discussions prior to about second or third quarter 2023 when that came up. And, you know, we were made aware of this issue and began working on that. So local, state, and federal funding are all used in part to, to help pay our classified staff. Local funding has always been used to fill those gaps left by the state. And what I mean by that, for example, so if, if TAs are allotted by the state, two TAs per three second grade classrooms, they consider that number for our entire student population. So if you have an elementary school with four second grade classrooms, you only get the two TAs plus a half, and you can't split a person in half and have them work half a day at one school and half a day at another school. So basically we use either, either federal or local funding to hire an additional person so they can work at that school all day long. Hopefully that made sense. So that's something that local funds have always been used for. So we did make classified employee pay a priority in our budget request from last year. So if anybody's went and watched that, we did have specific line items in there from a pay study to request writing that pay for classified employees. The total request for that entire pay study recommendation was about 3.4 million with 2.8 million being the classified portion of the request. So Dr. Dawsonbach had made that recommendation to the board, and the board in turn made that request to the county that was not funded in full. So that's a bit of your background. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So I wanted to go through a couple of county funding facts. So for this one, I've heard a lot of people say, and I'm just paraphrasing, but the county provided a little over $2 million in additional funding to the school system this year with no strings attached. So while that figure is accurate, I want to give a little bit of clarification about what that $2 million was for. So on the right-hand side, this is just an excerpt taken from the county budget to kind of back up what I'm telling you. So the county increased the school system's capital funding. So this is, you know, for building repairs, vehicle purchases, those capital things by $646,000 for this school year. This funding cannot be used for employee salaries. So that is part of that $2 million total. So after capital on the current expense funding, the county increased our budget by about 1.37 million for this school year. That funding can be used for employee salaries. Again, from our budget, so, so going below that, off the top of that 1.37 million, we had to take out an amount to cover inflationary costs. So these are things like utility bills, employee insurance increases, all the things that are common bills to us that we have to spend to maintain status quo, right? So that was about 981,000. So that leaves the school board with about 392,000 of basically discretionary spending. So yes, we received a little over $2 million in additional funding. There's a chunk of that, this capital that can't be used for salaries. There's a chunk of that that had to go to pay our bills, and then that 392,000 and change is left over available for us to do something with. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So central office restructure savings. So we're going through this just because this is another piece of, of how we arrived at our plan for tonight. So I think kind of a rumor here that I've heard a few times at the top is the school system spent over a million dollars in the central office restructure. That is not correct. So just to give a little bit of what we had there, so this came from the performance audit. There were recommendations for positions that were either redundant or could be combined. So basically we had, the positions here eliminated, there were a total of seven. You got that right? So about seven positions eliminated. We did add an additional position for a mental health coordinator. But at the end of the day, the cost of that central office restructure saved the school system about $300,000 annually. Okay, so please keep in mind that it takes a full calendar year to realize that full savings, right? So that's every month, there are less salaries in central office, so that savings adds up to about $300,000 annually. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So this is just a little bit on the pay study that we did. Just wanted to highlight here the counties that, Lee County was compared to. So we had a range of folks, so everything from our neighbors. So you're talking about Chapel Hill, Carboro, and Wake, two districts that were just similar in size and both with students and staff to us. And the highlight here is in that right column. So there was a cost of living index applied. So the recommendations from this pay plan are not for Lee County to compete with Wake County wages, but to be cost competitive for the cost of living in Lee County. Hopefully that makes sense also. So if you go to the next slide. So this is actually our recommendation to the board tonight. So again, at the top here, the, the total cost to write the classified pay portion of that pay plan is about 2.8 million. So that would fully implement that recommendation, which would move each classified person to their newly adjusted pay scale and place them at the correct step for their number of years of service. Again, I want to highlight that 2.8 million is classified only. So I, I relisted, so we got additional funding from the county this year, the 392,000, plus cost savings from the central office restructure of 300,000. So we're just shy of $700,000 that we have available as discretionary spending. So with that, the recommendation tonight is to fund 25% of that pay study recommendation. So you've got the 2.8 million. We're recommending funding a quarter of that at 709,000 is the final number. So this would be effective January 1st of '25 with that pay starting February of '25. And then going forward from that, you know, that first quarter is, I would recommend that the school board for fiscal year 2026, so our budget recommendation that would come up in the middle of next year, would be to request the county to fund the balance of that. So it would be what approximately 2.1 million. The reason that we're not requesting that in quarters, so I stuck another chart here from the, the county's budget fiscal year 2025 packet. So this is the county fund balance year over year. So for the last two or three years running, that fund balance has grown by over $5 million annually. So after all expenses are paid, there's over $5 million a year going into the savings account. That savings account is more than $10 million over the county's own recommended cap. So that would be the green, the green line that you see running there. That's, that's the county's policy for where they want fund balance to be. So with that extra funding that's being put in savings every year, what I read from that is there is no need for a tax increase to fund this request. So that is why I would recommend to the board making a full request next year. So I've got one more slide just to talk about some of the alternatives that were discussed. So this wasn't like a one-size-fits-all plan that we just threw that one up against the wall and it stuck. So there, there were other things we talked about. So the first alternative was to reduce the number of positions and increase the pay for the remaining positions to fully fund that pay study recommendation. So I think the short story here is based on feedback from everybody involved, from parents to teachers to TA staff. Everybody says that's not in the best interest of our kids, to reduce headcount in order to pay the rest the ways that the pay study recommends. So that was option number one that was a no-go. The second one was to use fund balance to complete a larger percentage of the pay study recommendation. So fund balance is a savings account, right? That is not funding that's received every year. So for me, that is not advisable for us to use fund balance for a recurring cost because if you do that, if we don't receive additional funding from the county, that fund balance decreases every year and eventually you're broke. We're not, we're not doing that. I don't do that with my personal finances. I'm one, I'm one member out of seven, but I would not recommend that. The third option that was floated was to use discretionary funds, so that 700,000, plus some fund balance to do a one-time bonus. Again, I would just say for me personally, that's a non-starter. This is a 15-year issue of people not receiving pay increases. A bonus is not the answer. That's not acceptable. So these were just alternatives that were discussed, looked at, and ultimately didn't make the cut for the recommendation. So I know that's a ton of information, but Madam Chair, with that, I would make a motion to approve the. I would make a motion to approve the, um, the 25% recommendation for classified staff.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'd just like to say that I appreciate the fact that this board is basing a lot of the material on some of the things with the performance audits. Lots of counties have performance audits, but they don't follow through. It's like you get a test or you go check, you check out your car and they recommend this, this, and this, but you don't necessarily do what the mechanic recommends, for whatever reason, whether it costs too much or maybe you think they're trying to sell you some bad information or charge you for additional parts. But at Lee County Schools, at the last annual meeting that I attended for the School Board Association, we had no less than 10 or 12 different counties asking what we were doing in Lee County and how we came to that conclusion. And it all went back to the performance audit and the pay study. So first of all, great work. I know you've done a lot of work on it, but my recommendation would be for us to keep on digging deeper and deeper until we can live within our means and we can justify every single cent to our community. Cause I, I, I think this was a great start with a performance audit. And if I can get 10 or 12, uh, more counties to do a performance audit, I'd like to call the performance auditors back in and say, hey, you owe us a free one to come back and, and redo and see how well we did. Cause it's your dollars. It's, it's not our dollars. And, and I hope y'all know that. They're not going to tell you this, and I'm going to share a secret with you. Every person on this board probably makes, well, not exception of the board members, makes approximately a little over $300 a month. And I work them to death. I really do. They work 30 to 40 hours sometimes a week. And they dig into things like this and they spend a lot of times doing it. So when you say that it feels like it's a slap in your face, I want you to understand, no one on this board would like for you to feel like that's a slap in your face. We're just doing the best that we can with what we have. So that's all the discussion I have on it. We have a motion on the table. We got a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alan, did you combine those two?
I can move on to the next one. Yep. So I guess just moving forward from, from that individual piece, there is a resolution that I'd like to bring to the board. To basically, so, I don't know, talk is cheap, right? So we can say all day what our plan is, but I think a board resolution, assuming it would be passed tonight, this would just be the board's plan going forward and would be essentially a, a document that's signed. So, so there's some accountability there. So with that, I will go ahead and read this, I guess. So this is the resolution in support of the Classified Staff Compensation Plan. Whereas classified positions in Lee County are funded using no less than 14 different funding buckets or sources, including state, federal, and local. In NCGS 115C-426E, requires the state and local funding must combine to sufficiently fund operations of the school system. And whereas Lee County froze all pay increases during the 2008, 2009 recession and has not reinstated annual step increases for classified staff. The annual step increases, historically funded by counties, are not supported at the state level. To our knowledge, Lee County remains the only North Carolina county to maintain a freeze on classified pay increases. And whereas the Lee County Board of Education commissioned a paying classification study that outlined recommendations to make Lee County schools' employee wages market-competitive with surrounding counties when adjusted for cost of living. The Lee County Board of Education recommends full implementation of those recommendations to ensure the district can recruit and retain highly qualified staff. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Education recommends implementing the pay and classification study recommendations in full as quickly as possible. This plan will require a commitment from the Lee County Board of Commissioners to provide funding. The first 25% of implementation has already been funded in the amount of $709,000, using available discretionary funds and savings realized from restructuring the central office. The Lee County Board of Education will provide an updated funding request to complete the remaining balance of the classified pay plan to the Lee County Board of Commissioners in the fiscal year 2026 budget. Be it further resolved that the Lee County Board of Education hereby directs Central Office to reinstate annual step increases for all classified staff, including a specific line item in the annual budget request detailing the required funding for this initiative. Annual step increases shall remain subject to funding availability to ensure a balanced budget. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be submitted to the Lee County Board of Commissioners, adopted this day, 10th of, adopted this 10th day of December, 2024. And Madam Chair, I would make a motion for the board to approve that resolution.
I'll second. Are you in discussion?
Any discussion? Is second, then there's discussion. You got this. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. For the interest of time for the one that was added to the new agenda. Alan, your permission? I'll just go ahead and read it.
Yes, ma'am.
So, uh, next we have a letter that is going to Senator Phil Berger and Representative Tim Moore. Those of you who don't know, that's the Senator President Pro-Tim, and that is the Speaker of the House. Dear Senator Berger and Speaker Moore, we, the Members of Lee County Board of Education, are writing to urgently, urgently request that you take action to address the critical issue of teacher pay in North Carolina. Specifically, we advocate for minimal base salary of $50,000 for beginning teachers. As you are all aware, inflation has significantly impacted both our state and our nation over the past year. The North Carolina Commerce Department reports that the state's median personnel consumption expenditures inflation rate has reached approximately 3.8%. This inflationary pressure has been widely discussed in the media and reflected in statements from various members of the General Assembly. Unfortunately, during the recently concluded short, short session of the North Carolina General Assembly, no adjustments were made to the education budget provisions for the 2023 Annual Budget Session Law 2023-134. This decision means that while the state has provided 3.0% raise for certified and non-certified staff, this increase falls short of keeping peace with inflation. In real terms, this results in a reduction in pay for many of our teachers who are already working tirelessly to support the approximately 1.4 million students across our state. Teachers are the backbone of our education system, and it is unjust for them to face what amounts to pay cuts due to circumstances beyond their control as the cost of living continues to rise. Our educators should not be asked to bear the brunt of economic challenges. That is why the Lee County Board of Education joins with other boards of education across North Carolina in calling for a pay increase for both certified and non-certified staff of at least 5.0% with a minimal starting salary of $50,000 for new teachers. Our teachers, staff, and students deserve more. By raising teacher pay to a level that truly reflects the hard work and dedication of those who shape the future of North Carolina's children, we invest in the long-term success of our schools, communities, and state. We employ you to take swift and decisive action in the upcoming legislative session to provide the necessary pay increases for our educators deserve. Thank you for your attention to this critical matter. We are confident that with your leadership, we can ensure that North Carolina's teachers receive the compensation they earn. Sincerely, and then the board members. Would you like to make the motion?
Motion to approve the letter to the NC General Assembly folks.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Gaster, second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say, if I could, I just want to give a shout out to Mrs. Danielle Hayes at the Granville County Board of Education. She's the one that penned this letter. So there are several counties across the state that are, um, considering or have already approved this letter. So I think that action combined, hopefully will move the needle. I would also like to request that we can send a copy of this to the Board of Commissioners and see if they're interested in signing on as well, along with Board of Education.
Right. We can do that. I'm not certain the timing is, is going to work out appropriately with the sessions coming in and out, but we're trying. Okay? All right. And the last thing we had, uh, under new business is personnel. You need to take out. Oh, okay. I thought we did. All right. All in favor of the letter?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next we have personnel.
Madam Chair, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I move that Lee County Board of Education go into closed session under NCGS 143-318, Point 11A, 1A, 3A, 6, to discuss confidential personnel information under NCGS 115C-319 and 115C-321, and to consult with the board's attorney and maintain the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Right. Any discussion? We're now going to close session. Now's a good time, if any of y'all... Now's a good time, if any of y'all...